Oh my god, Chris type.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council work session for Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. The first item that we have on our agenda is the interview of an alternate planning commission member. And I believe that individual, his name is Trevor, he is here, sir, if you'd like to come up and have a seat on any one of those chairs, if you'd like. Okay, awesome.
Believe it's on.
All right, sounds good. Well, thank you very much for your interest in the planning commission. We really appreciate you wanting to come out and serve your community. What we have, we have six questions for you, and I will start with the first one. We'll go around each council member, we'll ask a question, and at the end, we'll have some time for questions that you might have for us.
Sounds good.
So if you're ready, we'll go ahead and get started.
I'm ready.
All right, sounds good. Well, the first question I have for you is briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in being on the planning commission.
Sure, thank you. My name is Travis Stovall. I live here in Evans at the Tuscan E condos. I'm married, my wife and I live, lived here in Evans for about a year and a half now. Come from a long line of community service members. My mom was the Parks Director for South Brunswick, New Jersey for thirty-four plus years. I've served on livestock committees. I've come from an agriculture background, so I've done various livestock committees all the way back to when I was twelve and the four-eight years, and moved on through FFA, and I judged livestock in college. I've spent time on the Colorado Independent Cattle Growers Association, Rocky Mountain Farmers Union, spent time at the national level. I like my community, want to see change. I'm a positive forward thinker. I feel if you want to see change, you gotta put your money where your mouth is and show up and, and put that forward, and if you want to voice your opinion, you've got to do it in a correct manner and with positive energy behind it.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you. Have you ever served on a board or commission? I know you just gave us a history of it. I know you said agriculturally you have, have you done? Have you done any other boards or commissions for cities or other areas?
To answer your question directly within municipalities or cities, I have not yet. I've been on the Board of Directors. I co-founded and started a farm-to-table beef business. We had shareholders, and it was a sizable company. We did about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of sales a year. I was on the Board of Directors of that as a, you know, a non-for-profit private organization, but in the, in the community, not yet.
Okay, and then have you ever attended or participated in any public hearings before?
Yes, again, at the state Capitol, I've testified and spoke my opinion on that level. I don't know if that satisfies what you're looking.
Yes, it does. It speaks to your experience. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Hi Travis.
Hello.
It's nice to see you.
Yeah, it was, it was all her fault. It got me hurt.
He actually, it was at Da Vinci Park. He came up and he's like, I'm interested, I want to serve my community. I'm like, well, let me show you where you go.
I'm in sales, so I noticed things, and she had her Evans name badge, and I tracked her down and started some conversations, and yeah, anyhow.
So it's great to see you.
Yes, thank you.
So my question to you, in your own words, tell us what land use planning means to you and how it relates to development in the city.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I really wanted to be part of the community somehow, but the land use component is really important to me, you know, as I had mentioned. I grew up in Durango, Colorado, so I've been in Colorado since I was seven, but where I'm going with this is agriculture has always been very near and dear to my heart. Open space, you know, mother being in parks and rec, environmental, certain issues are prevalent to me. And I also know that, you know, cities are developing and growth's important and keeps the economy going. So I feel that I'll have a sound opinion and thoughts about how to marry the two and put the two together because, you know, growth's inevitable, but if we can do it in a correct, respectful manner, that's, that's what I'd like to bring to the committee.
Thank you.
Hi Travis, welcome in.
Thank you.
Tell us your understanding of the planning commission's role and responsibilities and its relationship between the staff and city council.
Well, I should have done a little more homework, but I'm gonna tell you what I feel it is just in the general sense of, you know, what, what I understand about it, and that is, you know, the volunteers, if you will, the, the members of the community should come in, put their input on, you know, there's, there's public servants here, right? There's voted people, and there's, there's people that hold office in a, in a public servant setting, and their job is to hear from their community. And I believe our job on the community is the, the other side of the table, if you will, is to, you know, communicate what we feel, what we see, what we talk about, what we see in our neighborhoods and our communities, and instead of, well, that's not fair, we don't like that, well, let's, let's proactively talk about it. So as part of the, as a potential alternate for this committee, I feel that that would be my role in serving what we see and how we, we want to, you know, see our community expand and grow.
That's awesome. Great Travis, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Travis, Chris Delaney, we actually met also at Da Vinci Park.
Yeah, we live, we're neighbors.
Yes, we are. So I guess my question is, how would you handle a situation when you're presented with conflicting or opposing opinions?
Yeah, well, I've, I'm in sales, so I get conflicting opinions all the time. I spent time in the state Capitol. So to put it nicely, there were conflicting opinions there. You know, you've got to really stay passionate to what you believe about, and I've always prided myself in staying diplomatic and well-mannered, and there's importance to passion, but, but to do it, you know, with keeping respect and integrity is very important to me, so I don't know if I embrace them, but I appreciate conflict, and it's in our world every day, so, you know, just to hear the other side and keep to the facts and keep your emotions at bay. You know, you've got to use them, but you can't let them overpower you and let things get off course, because I've seen that happen. And it just stops progress, and then there's just, there's just too much animosity to make things really proceed the way they should.
Thank you.
How do you envision the city of Evans evolving over the next decade?
Well, that's a, it's a loaded question. It's a good question. You know, like I said, you know, you see the growth, you know, here in Greeley, the, the general area here. My parents live in Brighton, just between Brighton and Thornton, so there's growth all over the city, so growth's coming. I feel that, you know, Evans and Weld County is, is not just because of its heritage, but, you know, the agriculture here is a big economic driver, so there's going to be points where that's very important. I don't know that, I know exactly how to, to mold the two, but I feel that there's going to be, I don't say controversy or conflict, but, you know, growth's coming. We've got agriculture, we've got limited water here in Colorado, so we need to figure out how to union all three of them and more, but I feel that, you know, we're going to see a lot of private and public growth coming this way. And if we can channel it and do it the right way, talk about how we want to look at it, then that's all we can ask for.
All great, thank you. That concludes the interview questions. Do you have any questions for us?
You know, I always say to have questions, I think that as an alternate, I'd be excited to be there and see how it works, you know. I guess they're open to the public, these meetings, so even if there's no opportunity for an alternate at this point in time, I'd be happy to show up and start to really figure out the cadence of everything. This is more of a comment than a question, but I don't really have any direct questions at this point in time.
All right, well, great. Well, then, thank you very much for your time, for coming out this evening for the interview. We really appreciate your interest in the planning commission and everything. I know you are the only applicant. Does anybody have any reservations? Well, that was pretty easy, so we would like to welcome you as an alternate in the planning commission, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Positions and everything, and staff will be in touch with you to kind of give you when their general meetings are and everything, and kind of get you up to speed with that and everything, so.
Yeah, sounds good. I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
So just to be clear, at National Night Out is where we met, and he wanted to discuss about, you know, serving our community. And I was like, it takes everyone, so here's how to do it, and so thank you. Thank you for actually.
Yeah, of course, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
It's nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. Take care. All right, next item on our agenda is the twenty twenty-six budget session number three, the presentation of the compensation study report and related payroll budget. We're here from staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we jump into budget session number three, just to recap, we've talked a little bit over the past couple of weeks about expected revenues, forecasted revenues for twenty twenty-six, and then we've had some conversations about SNS and just what that is looking like. Tonight will be another big topic of discussion for the budget, because this will pertain to obviously comp and class. So over the last several months, our human resource manager, Julie Timkowitz, has been working with employers' council to go through and evaluate our compensation structure in relation to several other communities throughout the northern Colorado region, really to see how our compensation and how our, our structure, our compensation structure relates to other communities in the area. We know that from one year to the next, compensation is always the most, one of the most critical issues that we have to deal with. And so I thank Julie for all the work that she's put in over the last several months in coordinating with employers' council. We have had several discussions internally to get us to this point tonight in preparation for the presentation with city council. And so as we go through this conversation, please ask questions, let us know what your thoughts are. That way we can have as comprehensive as a discussion as possible. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to staff, and they will lead the next, the next portion of this discussion.
Yeah, and we have our consultant on as well, but I wanted to add a couple of pieces to what Cody mentioned. We do still have some work to do, so the numbers that you all saw at the previous work session have not changed a ton. So we had some really good estimates in the budget that helps to accomplish a lot of what you'll hear tonight, so not everything. You're hearing our new dollars to the budget. We did have some estimates in there. We're working on identifying those capital costs that you heard last time, and really prioritizing those, and still remain committed to making the reductions that might be necessary for us to achieve a balanced budget. So Elsa and I have been working hard this week, already trying to scrub different things, make sure our inter-fund transfers are correct, those overhead components that the enterprise funds will pay for, for general fund costs, that's helping a little bit in the general fund. So doing some really great work that we hope will, will get us there without too much more pain, but a lot of this already is included in the, the budget. And then I'll turn it over. Do you want to introduce John to?
Yes, yep, yep, we have John Curtis on the line with us. He is the compensation specialist and who has conducted the market study for City of Evans, and we have him on today, and he has a presentation for you. John.
Thank you, Julie.
How are you?
Good, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. If at any time I need to speak up or speak down, let me know, and if we could step to the next slide. So the employers' council, many of you probably are familiar with them, based in Denver. They've been around for a very long time as a five oh one C six corporation, providing employee relations, human resources, a whole full suite of, of advice and counsel through a membership-based association. Offices, the main offices in Denver, other offices in Colorado Springs, Leveland, Phoenix, and Salt Lake City. Myself, I work remotely. I'm up in the mountains of western Wyoming. If you've been to Yellowstone, I'm about seventy-five miles south of Jackson Hole. And I've been with the council for about seven years now, doing consulting. Prior to that, my career's been in human resources, right out of a master's program, and I've worked just up and, up and down the organization, in the states, out of the states, kind of been there, done that a little bit. And like, I just joined consulting so we could live and work in the mountains. So that's a little thumbnail about me, probably more than you wanted to know. Next slide, please. We'll talk about the project scope here. The project scope was to identify the market pricing for the city's positions. That was a hundred and six different, unique positions that we did market pricing for and analysis. So first, we identify the market pricing, and then we analyze that market pricing with the current step plans, both the non-sworn and the sworn plan. We also looked at the competitiveness of that step plan versus, versus the market, and also analyzed individual employee pay compared to the market. And when we, when we do that, we're using a database of market positions. I'll explain a little bit more about that, but it's called Pay Factors Peer. And we match to the best position available in that database. There's about five thousand positions total, but specifically, you'll see, and maybe we can go to the next slide in talking about the methodology, that we really identified twelve agencies. Thirteen, it would have been if Fort Lepton would have participated, but they did not. All of these organizations listed here participate in the peer EA platform, as does the City of Evans. This is a dynamic compensation database where our members can go out and see real-time data and, and make comparisons and analysis once that data has been loaded into the system. So it's, it's taken the place of previous surveys that we used to do, hard copy and paper. And Julie, I imagine, has spent many, many hours. When I was a member, I, I and my staff spent a lot of time submitting data to those surveys, and then you would get a hard copy or a PDF electronic version. And now we have a real-time database that, that members can utilize to analyze data. As far as, as I mentioned, with these peer agencies, that these twelve that are listed here provided data and participate in peer, some more than others. Some, you could see they've fully participated, others maybe not as much, and they're, given the different size of the organizations, they may have many positions that match very well to the City of Evans, and others may have more or less positions, you know, larger or smaller organizational structures and responsibilities. But we were able to gather data and compare many of the jobs with these twelve agencies. There are some limitations to the system. For example, this, it's, the peer platform will only generate data when there are five agencies. So think of if Brighton, Erie, Firestone, Fort Collins, and Frederick, we have data from them, then that, that data will be publishable. And it's a limitation for, to protect data privacy within the system. In situations where we, we did not have enough data to match a specific City of Evans position to these twelve organizations, these peer agencies, then we simply zoom out geographically to a larger area. As a general rule, that tended to be all government for the state of Colorado. Now, you, you, you may be thinking, well, is that a good or bad thing? Were we, were we better off or worse off? Julie and I compared a number of positions where we had data from these peer agencies and the state of Colorado. And as a general rule, this, the data from the twelve agencies was equal to or better than what we would see from the state. So we weren't hindered or hampered by having to zoom out when necessary to get that data to publish. As far as the market matching methodology, we, we always use job descriptions. We don't just match to job titles, but we dig in and try to identify what are the key responsibilities of a position, because different organizations have different titling structures. So we look at the responsibilities, we look at the experience and education requirements. That, that usually, those three things are, are the best indicators of a match, and sometimes it actually does line up title for title, but many times it does not. Next, as far as aging the data, we aged the data to January first of twenty twenty-six. We do that because that's the next time the city plans to make pay increases, and so we're trying to get to line up apples to apples. And the aging factor that was used was three point five percent. So in other words, we, we took the data, the peer platform data, and, and that data may have been provided by any number of these entities, might have been in February, or March, or April, whenever they provided that data, that data was aged forward to January first of twenty twenty-six. As far as defining the city's market position, one key element of doing that is identifying who your peers are. So these twelve agencies are the peer organization, and the market position was to be at market or to be competitive with, with these peer agencies aggregated together. So we're not looking at Fort Collins and, and comparing that data to Evans. We're aggregating and, and taking all of that data together to create averages and highs and lows and things like that. As far as a conservative approach, the conservative approach, the best way to describe that is that with salaries, you don't want volatility. The idea is to have a nice, smooth system that doesn't radically change year over year. And one of the keys to that is the, the strength and quality of the data. Having moved to this new platform, my recommendation was, don't be overly aggressive, but let's take a conservative approach, because this is a new platform. In some cases, we had to match to different positions than we had matched to before. Secondly, when you have a, a smaller sample size, and, and I'm a purist, the more data points I have, the smoother my lines are going to be, the more reliable and comfortable I will feel with that data, and the more precise decisions we can make. And so if you have a smaller sample size, for example, say that out of these twelve agencies, we had six incumbent data points. The smaller the data, the greater the volatility if that data were to turn over. Case in point, maybe two of the six incumbents retire and they're replaced by people newer in their career. That's going to affect that compensation data. Again, the word I use is, we use is volatility of the data. I'll just pause here and see if we have any questions about methodology.
No, well, I was gonna wait till the end, but.
Okay, we can just wait.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and wait till the end for questions.
You want to hold questions? Okay, I'll just keep going. So the city provides a really good compensation package, and when we think of total compensation, it's not just pay, but it's benefits, and, and even beyond benefits, it's, it's the work environment or the culture, the quality of the work life that you provide. And you have a very good and comprehensive package of pay and benefits. Let's move to the next slide. Thank you. So first, we'll look at the study findings for the non-sworn positions, so non-sworn being everything but sworn police officers. The good news is, the majority of the non-sworn positions are aligned with the market. There are, there were some positions that were more than ten percent below the market. And the reason ten percent has relevance is because that's the spacing between the city's grades. So if you go from grade one thousand to grade eleven hundred, there's going to be a ten percent spread in, in those, those step five, or what we, what we refer to as midpoints. So anything beyond a ten percent spread, it's, it's worth considering whether or not we regrade that position. Next finding was that the structured step plan for non-sworn is still aligned with the market. So that, that, that step plan was created a few years ago. It's still aligned with the market. It's something that every year you want to keep an eye on, but right now, it's in good shape, and I think it's, it, it should be working well for you. There are adjustments that we would recommend for employees where the market dictates some larger adjustments. In other words, so when, when, when we look at the data, first, we're looking at the job itself, so pick a job, account it. And we look at the market data for accounted, and, and then we make some decisions about that. For example, is it at market or is it below or above market? Then, once you've looked at the job, you'll look at the individual or individuals in those jobs to see if their pay is in need of an adjustment. We call those, I call them equity adjustments. So, but again, the vast majority of employees' pay is, is aligned well with the market. And next slide, please. Let's switch to the police sworn positions. So the police sworn positions are a little bit different than the non-sworn. Little bit below market, and it's important to note here that this is taking into account, if you remember a couple of slides ago, I mentioned that we aged the data to one one twenty-six. I backed that out. So what I'm saying here is that today, right now, the police officer pay is approximately seven percent below the market, and the sergeant's pay is a little bit more below market. If you didn't do anything come one one twenty-six, you could add three to three and a half percent to this, and it would, it would put you a little further behind than, than what you're seeing on the slide now. It's an important point about aging the data. I want to make sure that, that that makes sense, because it affects what you're seeing here. So again, this is, this is below market today. Okay, next slide, we'll go to recommendations. So recommendation is to consider upgrading positions that are more than ten percent below the market. And that ten percent also was today, not taking into account the aging of three point five percent. No change to the non-sworn step plan, and consider adjusting the sworn step plan to align with the market. And obviously, everything depends on the ability and funds available, but again, if, if that was not a limitation and, and you had a blank check, you know, these are some of the things that, that, that we would recommend doing. That's the, the last slide. Maybe go to the next slide, which I think is just a question slide. Nope, it's not. But let's pause there, and, and we'll address any questions council has.
Any questions, Councilmember Delaney?
Yeah, so I guess I'm a little behind the curve on what, what you're saying by aging. So are you basically saying that anytime after, you know, you know, we, this data came in from these different organizations throughout the year, and basically what you've done is said, okay, but we assume they're going to raise stuff next year, so we're just going to tack on three and a half percent. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. We, we always age the data forward to a common date, apples to apples. And it aligns typically with the date the organization and the city is planning to make their changes.
Hey, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions?
Yes. Of the hundred and six positions, what percentage is below the market?
Boy, off the top of my head, I, that's not a question I have an answer to right now. Certainly.
Well, I don't know that I have the, oh, I'm sorry, John, percentage, but I think there are twenty classifications.
Yeah, that's maybe, so that'd be under twenty percent. I think that was Jackie. Thank you, Jackie.
Julie.
So under twenty percent?
A quick question. They, when they were, when you were mentioning comparing, like, apples to apples, things like that, and we had cities that we were being compared to, are they, are we, were we, I'm sorry, I can't even spit it out. Were we being compared to cities with comparable budgets as well, or is it just they're comparable in size? Because there are some cities that make quite a bit more with revenue than we do.
And another factor we look at in those cities too is where are we losing our workforce to? So these are the competitor agencies that could be looking to, you know, grab our employees after we've trained them and gotten them up to speed. Where could they go for a little bit more money within kind of a general region and do a similar job for more money? Ultimately, we're trying to keep them here. So they may have more money. There are smaller agencies that have more money. There are larger agencies that have more money. And we hope that there's a quality of work life and, you know, job satisfaction that comes from Evans. That some things we can work on, some things we can't, right? But we wanna know where are we losing employees to? What are they paying? What could the accountant and the police officer, you know, make if they hopped over to one of these neighboring cities? And we wanna be competitive in terms of what those agencies are paying. But to your point, yeah, they may absolutely have more or less revenue, more opportunity to pay larger dollars than us too.
So when we were looking at those twelve, um, were we looking at all of them in comparison to Evans? Okay, cuz yeah, those budgets are completely, wow, yeah, skewed.
And as John mentioned, you know, trying to get an aver- or trying to get at least five data points. So five responses that have a, a city clerk, an accountant. Um, not every job is easily matched. So we have had to have some additional work with directors to say, what's the split? What's the most closely aligned job to what your job is here? And try to match those as best we can. But with that many agencies, we hopefully have at least a decent statistical representation of what an average rate of pay is for that job.
So.
Also have to look at it this way as well, even though they may have, couldn't have larger budgets and could offer maybe better compensation. The thing is, is if you hire somebody in that's off the street, you're gonna have to hire them at market as well. And you're gonna lose the experience that you have with the employee, as Jackie said, that you've trained, you've invested all this time and money and energy in. And then turn around and lose into a competitor and bring somebody in off the street and have to start that process all over again. It's best to try to retain and offer that market rate to them to retain the talent that we have and keep them here instead of losing them to other entities as well.
Absolutely. And you bring up a good point. We, we didn't really define market, what is market. Um, and so it is a statistical calculation of what that, that mean is in our area. What, what is somebody who is not an entry level employee? They're maybe not a, a twenty-year tenured employee, but they're functioning in their job. They're highly productive. They're, they're doing their job. They're mastering their job. So we're looking at comparing, you know, everybody who's in that mid step point, if you wanna think of it that way. You know, for each of our step plans, everyone's on a grade and there's ten different steps as you move through the projection of your projec- projection of your job. So that step five is that midpoint for us. So we're evaluating, okay, if somebody is at that midpoint of your job here, are they making market? Are they making that same amount at these other agencies? And so Julie and April and I also spent better part of a day, right? Going through every single employee and saying, where are they on this step plan? Are they a new employee? What is the market rate of that? Okay, does it make sense that they're making slightly less than market? Because they're, they're not at that step five. They're at a step two. They've only been here two or three years. And is that appropriate given what the market data is showing? Or do we have an employee who is a midpoint, step five employee, they're doing well? Are we, are we paying them appropriately? And then we have some folks that are, you know, highly senior and tenured in their position. Maybe they're making more than somebody who might be in a step five and kind of in that average rate. So they went through every employee and looking for department equity and equity in terms of what the data is showing and what the um tenure of the individual employee has been to. So when we say market, the intention is to pay a true market rate. Um, you know, Mayor Clark, if somebody leaves, then you're exactly right. That's what it's going to cost us to get a new incumbent into that position. Maybe it would be a little less if they were a newer employee and it took more.
But can I ask you one question that you?
Can I ask a question really quick? Sorry. So based off like what, kinda going piggybacking on, off of both council members um, questions. So based off this information, just so I'm clear. So technically, the old, who is below market at this moment is our sworn, so our police department. Because it says no change to non-sworn step um structure. So right now, we're just exclusively looking at.
They're not.
No, okay.
So let me, let me clarify that point. The plan is the step plan. So what John has, has said in his research and his recommendation of the city is the step plan that we have is functioning. The step projection progression, sorry, as folks are moving through their job mastery, they are still able to get salary increases, pay increases that continue to keep them at market rate. So there's no changes in the, the structure of the step plan. He thinks that's working. There are employees that are outside of the police department that are below that ten percent of market.
And what it was stated was just twenty percent of them. So now with the employees that we have, based off last year's information, who, because a step is a step, right? But just, it doesn't mean that everyone automatically gets it.
Correct.
So what percentage did get their step last year? And then um, do you foresee that same percentage of P, of, of staff also increasing in twenty twenty per um, performance, um, in, in excellent performance review?
Yeah, great question. I, I hope so, is the answer. You know, our goal is to continue to have high performing employees and folks that are excelling in their jobs. If they're not and they're on a performance improvement plan, they're on some kind of path of, of coaching, of improvement with their supervisor or their um department director. They may not be getting that entire step plan increase or any at all. And so our policies, you know, dictate if you're on a performance improvement plan, you, you will not get that step plan. If you're an employee who has, who goes through a successful evaluation, you are doing a good job. You are prog- progressing in your knowledge and expertise. Then you also have the opportunity to progress in that next step of the pay plan as well. So my, my hope is that, yeah, we continue to have a high percentage of our employees that continue to have that opportunity.
What was last year's percentage that did receive a step?
I don't know that I have that.
Well, no, I think. Not, not the step.
As a whole.
It, it is just exactly.
I think we were almost ninety-nine, one hundred percent.
Yeah, so I just wanna go back to the cost of losing people to other municipalities. Um, do we have any information, best guess or actual number of what it costs to hire somebody and train them to be just the bare minimum Evan City worker? You know, every, this is the level that everybody gets, whether you're the CFO or um, somebody working on the rec counter.
Their onboarding cost?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have more updated data. Anecdotally, I've heard it's, it's two to two and a half times that first year annual salary. Um, and I had worked with previous police leadership to understand what that true cost of a new police officer is in terms of, you know, all the new equipment, the training, the additional cost of field training officers, as well as what you're paying them during that time, that sort of thing. Um, and it was almost two and a half times for an entry level police officer, um, when we had calculated real numbers. So it might be less for somebody who has less specialized equipment, um, or training needs of that. But I would say it, it oftentimes can be double in that first year of getting somebody trained and up to speed.
Here, here's my philosophy on this. I, I, I believe in paying our, I, I, I believe in paying staff fair market value and everything. I believe that losing staff and talent to other organizations puts a detrimental effect on the organization, especially with all the time, energy and money that was put in there and their knowledge that they've gained over, whether it's one year or ten years or more that they've worked here. There's a cost to doing that. And I believe that we should be paying our employees at or above market rate, especially in our police department as well. My biggest question is, is how do we pay for it?
Sure. So let me, let me pause there and not give a, a direct answer. John, stay with us. We'll continue through the rest of the slides here and then if there's other questions, uh, I'd hope you'll still be on in case.
Before we venture off and get into, I still have some more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the first question that I have is the uh peer EA platform. Do all the municipalities pay to be part of the platform?
It's a great question. It's part of, yeah, there you go. It's part of their membership with the Employers Council. And uh, and some organizations, like I don't know if any of these have, they can actually buy and pay for uh peer EA from pay factors on their own. And you would still see that data. But by and large, these are all members of the Employers Council.
So then when they're part of this program, does the system give parameters when they're uploading the data for you to collect and organize those data points?
Yes, yeah, it's a good question. It is, um, and, and Julie can speak to that as well because I think she's entered data in for the city of Evans. Uh, it, it is um very specific about um, uh what data they're looking for. The key is, and it always is in any compensation study, the key always begins with the quality of the match. How good are they matching the jobs?
Okay, and then our step program is one through ten. So if we're analyzing in the county level one employee and other markets, we don't know what their step programs are. And we're looking at an accounting level one, level, sub-level five. You following me? How are we cross-checking Fort Collins to an equal employee if they're using a three tiered system? And we would have to cross-check that accounting level one in that second tier? How are we, how are we validating that data to then making sure that we are not putting, we're truly using the data set points correctly so that we're not pulling incorrect hourly wages across? Is that, do you understand my question?
Yeah, I, I, well, let's see how I respond and you can tell me if I understood. But, but yes, it, it begins, so if we take uh s- your example, an accountant, an accountant one. And um, let's say all twelve of these organizations all have one accountant one. And that accountant one, that, that has a job summary that's gonna describe key responsibilities and experience and education. So generally, a, an accountant one is gonna be a bachelor's degree with zero to two years of experience. And so one of the keys in um, in aligning and validating the data is that they're matching to that job. In other words, they're not matching an accountant one uh where they have somebody who has ten years of experience when there's another position more senior, like an accountant three or a senior accountant. That would be a better match for them to utilize. Now, so that's maybe an answer to the first part of your question. I think the second part of your question about what would we do if Fort Collins has a tiered system? And Fort Collins would say the same thing. What do we do with Evans? They have this, they have a step plan. How does, how does that work? And the answer is that it, 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 it um, it, it affects the quality of the data. And that's why we want as many data points as possible. Because some individuals, incumbents in a, in an accountant one position might be um, using city of Evans system a- at step two and others might be at a step eight. When you get enough data points in there, it smoothes all of that, all of that out. And so you've got different people with, with different experience levels, again, within that job description of the match. And, and with that, that job description and then those incumbents, the data tends to smooth out pretty well uh when you have sufficient data points. Which again is why I mentioned that um, if you, in some cases, I zoomed out to get more data points or in other cases where the data set is a little small, I would, my recommendation was be conservative. Don't make an aggressive uh pay decision based on this data. Let's watch it and see what it does say next year. See how that data set might change uh since you have access to the peer EA platform.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Remember Neil?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? All right.
Great. Then I will answer the question in the room. How do we pay for this? What is, what does it mean in terms of dollars? So the cost of these recommendations, like I mentioned, is largely incorporated into the last version of the budget. And I have a summary still on the next slide, I believe. Uh, but if we look at police first, the total of the step increases is about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars as police move through their mastery of their roles as well. The market adjustments that John spoke to, the catch-up that we need um to add to these salaries so that we have competitive rates of pay for our police officers is the largest number on this screen. So four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars is what that costs. They're the largest department of the city and it impacts the largest number of people. The non-sworn staff, you'll see much, much smaller. That market adjustment, if we can start on the bottom number of that second tier there, fifty-seven thousand dollars is the market adjustment for the non-sworn staff that were identified. Those are the folks that were below that ten percent of market. Please correct me if I speak wrong on this, Julie. Um, the step increases then for non-sworn staff is, is a larger number because that represents a larger number of people than just the police department. So it's two hundred and eleven thousand dollars is the normal path of employees on the non-sworn, non-police side moving through their step plans as well. We have separated out the enterprise funds because we're trying to really make sure we get the general fund balanced as we're, you know, looking for every dollar. So the market adjustments there, there were some classifications of employees in our enterprise systems that were identified to be below that ten percent of market as well. Folks that have really critical um jobs in these systems. So a little over fifty thousand dollars to bring those employees up. Many of them are moving one entire grade of their, their job to accomplish that ten percent adjustment. The step increases, the smallest number of um, the other step increases on this slide. Again, this is a smaller number of people. So as, they also have the opportunity to work through their step plan. That costs about forty-seven thousand. And I can give you summary numbers too. I see some calculators out um as well. It's included in your staff report too. The piece we haven't talked about yet in much detail is benefits. So your employee review team, hopefully that's a very common term. They work really hard all year long to make sure that some of the benefits that the city staff have are, are appropriate. Are the best deal we can get, are the best value for employees and the city and what those recommendations are. So this group has heard from our brokers and our providers, some options for medical plans next year. We were originally told, hey, plan for an eighteen percent cost increase in these plans. And we kind of took a breath and we started to talk about cost sharing options. We started to talk about who can pay this and why and how and, and how we, can we accomplish this? They were able to go back and identify options that will bring those costs down to about an eleven percent increase down from a seventeen, eighteen percent. So um, thank you, ERT team for staying vigilant in options and thinking through what other opportunities might exist that help this be a cost-effective option for us. Um, because you can see there are over two hundred thousand dollars of benefit increases in terms of medical and dental coverage. And it, when we first floated this idea with, with Cody, he said, well, that's, that's really hard. How do we give employees a co- uh, you know, a merit increase? And then we say, but your, your health insurance is going up seventeen percent. Here's your, here's your three and a half percent. Um, and now you have to pay seventeen percent on your, on your insurance premiums as well. So trying to make, as John mentioned, the, you know, the whole compensation package, we're always looking at, how does everything that we offer our employee group match opportunities they might have in a different employer? And to remain competitive, um, this really is a, a crucial step for us to continue to look at paying for when we can. Um, those of you on council longer and previous staff, no, right? Not every, not every year have we been able to do this. There are some years we've cost shared the increases. Sometimes the city is able to do it. Sometimes the city is not. And so there has been no consistent standard. It really has just been, what are we able to pay for at this point? Uh, but we do feel like coming down to an eleven percent increase, it's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. It's not small dollar amounts. Uh, but the work that we continue to do to balance the budget, we've had great departments step up and say, hey, it's more critical for my employees to stay and for them to get a market pay. I think we can do differently with these dollars. So we continue to have those conversations at the executive team level as well that make me a little bit more confident to recommend that the city is able to pay for all of these pockets um of increases for these costs. So when I put this slide together last week, we were sitting still at a negative two hundred and twenty-five. So when I put this slide together last week, we were sitting still at a negative two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the general fund. And again, please, please remember that previous slide included enterprise funds as well. So not everything hits this general fund here. Elsa and I, as I mentioned, um, that number is a lot closer to zero today than, than two twenty-five. And so we remain committed to making sure that we can. Accomplish the recommendations in the compensation plan and still provide a balanced budget. If something happens and we can't. Um, then we would maybe bring back conversations on where these recommendations from the study. Lie in terms of priorities for city council and what we can do, what we can't. We do anticipate at this point we can do. All of the recommendations. Although Julie, sorry to put you on the spot a little bit. One of the pieces John mentioned was step plan for police. Do you want to share kind of what the, what the discussion has been around just step plan for police and keeping an eye on it in future? Years to see if we need to reduce steps or, or what that might look like? Or do you just want me to share my thoughts? Okay, well, you're welcome to, um, step into, so. Um, with Chief Darlin on board now too, he brought a lot of great perspective as we went through the details of this study. In terms of competitiveness and other police agencies as well, that was really helpful. And so we did have some internal conversation. We had a conversation with John about. Whether that step plan for the police side is working as well as the step plan on the city side. And if you recall, this. Police officers have been on a step plan for much longer. Uh, this is a, a longer standing practice than for all city employees. Um, there is a trend to have a more condensed step plan process for police officers so that police officers are. Moving through the ranks in three years instead of five years, um, for instance. So. We're not recommending a change currently. Um, it is one of those that we feel like we can accomplish the. Competitive rate of pay adjustments that need to be made for this employee group. While the step plan is still functional, although it's something that will be on our radar and something that we'll need to look at going forward. On whether that's the case for next year. If we are hearing and if the trend in policing is. Quicker movement than some of our other jobs in the city, then that's something we might have to look at. Um, evaluating that structure of the plan. And again, less on the dollars and, and more on. You know, if you have a forty thousand dollar range in a position and it currently takes somebody five years to work through that. If other agencies are moving them through in three or four, then ultimately they can achieve that higher rate of pay sooner. So something that, um, John was really helpful in looking through as, as well as Chief Darlin for our staff. Any other thoughts on that piece? Um, and just quickly before we open it back up for more questions. We are getting near the end of these budget work sessions, so that saddens some of us, maybe not all of us. Um, we do still have enterprise funds overview that we'll look at as we look at some summary. Information in terms of the overall budget. Some, some people are really sad, it looks like. Um. But we are marching towards. A complete balanced budget and appreciate the conversation as we. Prioritize and ensure that we have all the, the right factors in next year's budget. So. There will be more time to flush out all of this, although it feels like we're, we're making good progress on the, the budget in terms of where we're at. But happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Jackie. I actually do have a question. Well, it's, it's for the general audience, for them to know that's watching. When you, say, when you bring up somebody up to the market rate, say you have an employee that's. Below market, you bring their salary up to that market rate, do they also get their merit increase on top of that? Cause I know there were some people saying, well, if their market rate is greater than their merit, why would they get the merit if they're getting already a bigger increase than? With what the market sets?
Yeah, great question. So, so yes, our goal is to bring that employee up to market. And if the steps, so this is, okay, I'll go off topic a little bit. I've learned a lot more about our step plan in these last few weeks than, than I realized. I, uh. Didn't know. It's been kind of fun. So we want to make sure that first of all, they're, they're paid competitively to the market. If that adjustment is now being necessary to be made, we're saying, great, you, you maybe have been behind the market for. X amount of time. These adjustments are bringing them up to market. They are still. They do still have the opportunity to receive a merit increase as well and continue to move through that step plan. Um, it might be different for folks that are being recommended for an entire grade change because you might be at a. Step eight of a current grade and we said, oh, but you're ten percent behind the market. Instead of being a grade nine hundred employee, you are now a grade one thousand employee. You do not stay at step eight. We, we take you from the rate of pay you are, let's just call it eighty-two thousand dollars. If you are going to the next rate of, or the next grade. We take you to that step that is the next above where you're at. So if it's, if there's a step at eighty-three thousand, you would go to that next step. So. People would never go backwards in pay if you're being, if your grade is being adjusted up. And, but we wouldn't jump, you know, twenty thousand dollars of rate of pay. We take you to that next. I'm struggling to find the word. Exactly, the next comparable step. Um, and then you do still have the opportunity for a merit increase if then you are still, um, proving mastery of your job. So one is the market. Rate of adjustment, the other is the merit that you can receive.
So Mayor Clark brought up with that question. That kind of triggered another question for me. The freeloader effect. Do we have to bring an employee up to market rate? What if they're a subpar employee?
We do not.
Okay.
And so that was part of the evaluation process.
Were, um, did, um, passer performance review last year. That's why I was asking that same question.
Good question because twenty percent of them are not at market rate. So if the manager is not finding that particular employee. And that's good that ninety-nine percent to a hundred percent, we don't, so we don't have that challenge. But I was just kind of curious. Thanks.
I, that's the reason I asked for that same purpose.
Cause the freeloader effect, you could just.
So my. Let me add one other piece on that of my, of my learnings here because I know in some years we talk more or less about is the step plan still the right route for the city? The step plan protected the city in many respects when we looked at the recommendations from the study. I'll pick on anybody. Pick on me. If the, if the compensation recommendation said, great, your CFO is underpaid by two hundred dollars. Without a step plan, we would have gone and said, great, your market adjustment is two hundred dollars. Add that up for every employee that had any kind of market adjustment. We would have adjusted them, gotten them to market, and then they would have still had that opportunity to have a merit increase at the beginning of the year. If we looked at an employee and it said, yeah, a small amount of the two hundred dollars, you're below market pay. But you're still within your step, there's no adjustment. Sorry, madam CFO, you're, you're still paid appropriately. Um, and that's, that's good, right? That means that our step plan is working. That means that if, if our employees are at the current step. And it was a few dollars within market, awesome. That was a, a sign of success for us. That the step plan is still working. They are still being identified and paid appropriately. While also still saving a few dollars. You know, when we first looked at the recommendations from John. You know, he had nice calculation, every employee, here's what it is, so that we could know that dollar amount to evaluate. That employee against the market and their step and department, all the equity adjustments and review that, that these ladies did. Um, that gave us the confidence to know, here's the exact dollar amount, here's where they fall in the, the step plan. And for many employees, um, there is no adjustment that's warranted. And to employees that hope they get an adjustment that aren't, you know, the message is. Great, I'm glad you didn't have an adjustment. That means you've been paid appropriately all this time. So that's, it's a good thing that there is only twenty percent. You know, roughly that are in that boat needing adjustment. Some classifications of jobs. Are, are changing quicker in that relative value of our employee group.
I thought you had your hand up.
No.
Oh, okay, then go ahead.
I'm glad you brought that up, what you just said. So my, so I guess going back, I know in the past we've discussed, you know, the comp and class study. And we had like a bonus at some point for, I don't remember what reason, but there was a reason for. For it. And I just don't remember if that's still going on. Is that still a part of it? But that's not truly where I want to head. I just, I know that there was all these other things to help with kind of like the varying percentages below.
We did that before we went to the step program.
Is that what it was? Okay, that's what I'm like, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, thank you. That's what we did. Okay, so I'm glad, so scratch that, forget that. So now going back, um, and looking at our steps, so. What I would like to see, um, is what percentage for the police department is each step? I mean, you probably can tell me, is it three percent, five percent? Is it three to five percent? What does that look like? Um, and is it, is a step percentage like that, the, of it increased? It, it, yeah, because you go up a step. And, and how many steps? And, and the reason why I ask this is because. Oh my gosh, I'm trying to think where my thought, um, uh, train of. Is because that also you can adjust and, and ensure that we were not having these situations, you know, because you, you can adjust inflationary. Cost with that. So knowing that, but also with this twenty percent, I would like to know who. If there's a trend of what position tends to be always fall below. And the reason why I ask is because is their percentage? In raise or step too low? Do, should we adjust it for that specific position? And granted, it's not all positions. But specific, like city manager needs to be at a specific percentage. Um, the, the city attorney needs to be at a spec, a specific percentage. And just to ensure, and, and I'm not, I'm just saying just for hypothetical that maybe those two positions are below. And, and maybe that's the reason why the cost is high. And so. Looking at that percentage, is it an appropriate fair percentage? Sorry, I'm like putting both on glasses. Percentage for that position. Um, and then of course for the larger, you know, um. For all, you know, also looking at their percentage, i- i- is it something that's feasible? And what would be something reasonable so we're not having to. Close a gap that's so great. You see what I'm saying? And I know in the past we had mentioned. It, it was a suggestion, a cola situation. I, I, I know. Counties tend to do it. I'm not so certain about municipalities. But that also helps because some of them are flexible in the adjusting depending on revenue. Really like, you know, are we doing good? Maybe it's, this year's a two point five, maybe next year's a three point five dependent on how well the city's doing. And that can also help with, with, um, with pay. So that's another thought. But just really looking at everything and ensuring that those percentages are okay. And then with. Is this considered a, what we're just? Like a mini comp and class study or is just something superficial?
No, it is a full blown comp and class study.
And when is the last time we had one?
We have done one every year.
Every year.
Although it's been completed by different individuals. We've done it in-house. We've done it. Um, outside like John has done with employers council this year. So we've. Utilized some differing methodology year to year, which I think is what we've also learned is. Different data sets, different methodology, different folks that are running this type of, of study have the same goals in the end. May have different assumptions built in. And so. If we're able to stay on a consistent basis, if John, for instance, were to do this study again next year, we can build on the data. And some of the assumptions in our understanding right now, and we could really learn from that.
Forecast a little bit.
And forecast a little bit for it.
Exactly. And, and that's important.
And it's incredibly important that he has aged the, the data. So that three and a half percent. Increase helps us on January one already be competitive.
Yeah, so the last two years for the twenty twenty-four budget and then for the twenty twenty-five budget that was done internally. Uh, so the good thing about going with employers council this year was to have that third party. Um, evaluation of our comp and class structure. I believe for the twenty twenty-five budget, matter of fact, I'm certain for the twenty twenty-five budget, the data was not aged. So that could have some impact, likely has some impact on, on what we're finding through this study.
Then that makes sense. But that's the reason why I'm kind of going with this kind of like a question because it's just. We thought we were closing the gap. And, and it just seems that we're not, like we're constantly paying catch up. And so I'm like, trying to understand what's that? Um, that thing or that anomaly or what, I don't know that that wouldn't be it, but just that thing that's making us not get there. And if it was an age, that makes sense.
That's one part of it.
Aging was, was a part of it, but I think also if we do something, say if we were to do. A compensation study on a more regular basis with a third party, then that, that, that creates better consistency in the numbers. Uh, that I think could help us out, could help, uh, smooth everything out as well. But this is going to be an annual thing. This is going to be something that we've got to be on top of. Every year because the twelve peer communities that we're compared to, they're on, you know, they're, they're doing their analyses every year. Because they're running to the same things, right? People can move around, people can go to different locations to work. So we, we build in that consistency. We age the data properly and we stick with it. And I think that that, uh, I, I think that that helps us as we have subsequent budget conversations.
Just a little thing to butt in there, cause I, Mark and I were just talking about, we're always playing catch up and that. This is where it's good that we keep up the conversation on the mill levy because everybody has a higher mill levy than we do. And that is another thing that we need to keep in mind, especially when we're talking about budgets. So, you know, the money's got to come from somewhere and unfortunately. I, none of us want more taxes, but we are going to have to look at that and we do need to keep this conversation going with this. Even though it's an uncomfortable conversation, we've got to keep that going because. Um, I'm, I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, we're always playing catch up. There, just. Like we, especially with the police department, it feels like. It's always behind and we'll catch them up and we're doing great and then fall behind again, like. And that was a good idea you had of what positions maybe that, you know, were missing, but. That was one of the things I wrote down was the police department and how we're always, always trying to get them where they need to be. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to throw that mill levy thing in there because we need to keep that. At the forefront of conversations.
Just adding to this conversation that she's mentioning, um. Operations comes from general, general fund? There you go.
Councilmember Fair or Councilmember Neil, have anything to add?
Well, yeah, I should, I said yes, cause we consider, we have operations department that is, um, general fund, but if you're talking utilities, you know. Stormwater, water, wastewater, those are not general funds. And so there is a.
I'm thinking more personnel, admin. Personnel, yeah, personnel. Sorry, to be clear, personnel. Yeah.
Councilmember Fair or Neil?
Are there any safeguards in place to keep steps from decreasing? I know it's like job shift around stuff. I did know that in the past that happened where. You know, no one's paid goes down, but their upward mobility in the organization might. Decrease or like kind of limit them. Um, so are the, as the steps change, are they also able to move down?
Not typically, not typically. We don't see that and we haven't seen that in the, this year at all. John, can you? Address that at all in your analysis?
I want to make sure I understand the question. You're, you're, uh, asking if a person would go from say step seven down to a step four?
No, I'm, uh, I'm saying that as, uh, maybe some positions move up into a different step, the, the steps might readjust, uh, based on. The jobs in those, um, steps. Are the steps able themselves to decrease in, in value?
Um, I, I, yeah, in, in, I guess the, it's possible, but when we're looking at. Changing a grade based on market data. Um, then, you, I, I think, you know, Jackie and, and. And Julie and others have taken, you know, great care to. Individually analyze those to make, see what makes the most sense for where that person should be. Based on their, um, you know, their, their performance and, and tenure in the role and, and other factors.
So are you trying to say basically, I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm trying to understand this as well. So say you get moved up to a market adjustment and say step one. And that market adjustment brings you up, we'll just say to. Are you saying, asking if they, all the steps increase based on that? So like if you're making twenty bucks an hour brought up to market and then you move to step two and that's. Less than the twenty bucks an hour. Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, so I'm not talking about specific, um, employees moving amongst the steps. I'm saying that like, is it possible for the midpoint in a step to actually decrease? Like an employee. Employee might still be in there. Um, just cause as, I know it's rare, probably doesn't happen often, but I think is it just general, if that could be part of the policy to. Limit that or restrict that. Cause that is a very like demoralizing factor for an employee to be like. Not only, you know, my pay didn't go down this year, but like, it looks like now it could be several years before I get. it could be several years before I get any sort of market adjustment.
They're moving down in steps, yes.
Yeah, and it can just be based on the data that employers' council is receiving from other cities and jobs change, and also just like market needs change, especially as we're seeing such dramatic changes in technology and stuff like that as well. Some of those jobs might be less valuable or going away.
I see what you're saying. Now I get what you're saying.
I know, that's why.
Okay. I was like.
Right, I know it's probably not something that I thought very often, but that can be like a very demoralizing factor in that. You know, that, just as a comment, you know, thanks for doing this again, I really appreciate it. I know when I did work at the city back in 2017, that was a year where my personal assessment, I actually came out that I was making less than I would have if I came in as a new employee. And that, same thing, it's just not great for morale, that's not what we want to be doing. So this is great to be seeing this move in this way.
Councilmember Neal?
Well, I don't want to publicly make a suggestion that was triggered by some of the back and forth between the mayor pro temp and Councilmember Johnson and the mayor. So, I guess I have no, no other comments.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any other additional questions?
No, I guess the only comment I'm going to make is, I sat in a position for about two years that I knew I was getting paid under market rate, and I'm no longer at that position because I knew I was getting paid under market rate. I mean, I appreciate all the hard work we put into this, but we just, I mean, I can ask Ty if an Elgin is the best street seaper, and he would say probably yes. And I'd say, cool, does it do it by itself? No, he needs somebody to operate it, you know? And so in reality, our most important asset in this organization is the people. Because nothing we buy, other than the time of our people, does anything for the city by itself, so.
And we count on you for your expertise and your information because we can only do our job if you give us all this amazing information that you always do and you do your due diligence and tell us. I know. But I, I mean, I think I'm happy because typically, the reason why I asked about the comp and comp study is because it's typically three to five years for a small city. But I think for us, where we're at, and in order for us to kind of move in the direction that we need to, I do agree with doing it more frequent than what the standard is, just because things look different. I think kind of, it's important to keep good people, and with onboarding costs and all of that, if we can retain the knowledge that we already have here, that is important because we value everyone that's here, and so let's make more money. Yeah, no levy.
That's a business guy's favorite word.
Well, again, you know, Jackie, thank you to you and your staff and everybody for putting together this presentation for us and giving us an overview. You know, as Councilmember Delaney said, we really do value each and one of you employees here at the city. We appreciate all of your knowledge and your hard work. I definitely believe as well that, you know, we need to compensate you for that, and we need to make sure that you're getting a fair and market value for the work that you do. And we would hate to see somebody leave the organization to go somewhere else, you know, and take all that wealth of knowledge to go make a few bucks more down the road. So we really appreciate you and value you, and, you know, we hope to continue this conversation and, you know, see what those look like in the future for you as well, so.
Well, for our mall staff, thank you for your support. It's amazing, something we tell new employees in onboarding, you know, that come to a city that city council fully supports the work that we all do, and that isn't something that you can say everywhere. So it's much appreciated.
Well, I'm actually surprised that.
I feel like I need to talk more.
Right, I was like, no, I was expecting this to be a more lively discussion and we were going to go a lot longer, but it looks like we finished with about forty-five minutes to go until our council meeting, so.
I just, before you say adjourn. I know, but you know. Can we look at that, at the specific percentages?
We have all of, all of that, we try to. Julie actually had some of it included in the presentation tonight, and I thought, oh, maybe it's too detailed for a specific employee, but we're happy to share those, the step plans are out there too. It can, can help understand, I'm happy to walk through it as well too. We tried to keep it less of specific employee impact in terms of this particular slide until we heard from council, heard your direction and what level of comfort you had in these recommendations, but we're happy to share that.
And to the point that was made earlier about, you know, everyone's in a specific position and they do their best to be in that position, and maybe the market, it's not showing the value of that position. Just know that we're not going to let you just stay there at that specific level just because maybe, you know, we want to make sure you get compensated appropriately, whoever may be thinking about that. Because again, you know, it's, you want, everyone does valuable work, it takes everyone. So keep it up and all with good intention and responsibility.
The market's very competitive, right, especially from the labor resource perspective. So being able to take a look at this every year, I think helps take care of some of that concern of making sure people aren't falling back in their respective grade. But Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate, we appreciate the guidance and the conversations, not only from tonight, but throughout the entire budget process. Hopefully you're getting the information, I assume you're getting the information that you're looking for. If there's anything that we're lacking, please let me know. But the finance staff, human resource staff does a fantastic job. And so I'm very proud of the work that they do that allows us to have substantive conversations for arguably the most important policy document you guys will pass for 2026. So to staff, all of you, thank you, I appreciate every one of you.
John, thank you for your time as well, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Enjoy Wyoming.
It's good to meet you.
All right, well, with nothing further.
Executive session? Do the executive session?
The eat session.
No, that's because that's part of the regular meeting, so we have to start that at seven.